Thanks for being with me, joining us. We'll start tonight on thirty five. And we're doing this to get feedback. I'm gonna keep talking. My whole way. Yes, yes. A little bit, a little bit. Better. I didn't know. Uh, so how many help me up front?
Remember when I see this is working?
Oh, how we can see this. Uh, I really wanna tell you how much it's been. So Toby's my finance director. I started yesterday.
Glad to meet you.
Uh, Toby, you wanna just talk a little bit about your background?
Sure. Uh, so my name is Toby LaFrance. I've been in local government for a little over twenty five years. Uh, bulk of it was the most recently City of Tiger, where I was Director of Finance IT uh for the last thirteen years. Uh, prior to that, Park County, Washington, uh where Park County, Washington, up advantage. And so there I had positions holds in Central Budget Office, uh which is where I really kind of like felt of the local government and uh kind of working as finance manager for community development department. And so that's where most of my time has been spent at a couple other stops. The US Army Corps of Engineers, CH two pill, insulting, uh Fallin Valley Water District. So I've been been at a couple of levels of government, a couple of styles, city, county, special districts. Um, happy to be here. This is day two and I already get to send.
Well, we're really excited because we need the entire city of Tiger staff from Tiger to the city of Milwaukee. Uh, this is our third Tiger hire. I think it's us. So, uh, I deeply appreciate part of that is that we hired our director. Uh, Brandy Layos, we've been really great at recruiting. Um, and I also just appreciate uh that Brandy is so excited about the city of Milwaukee. So she's teaching us how to be better on LinkedIn, uh which I also appreciate to help us get some people to weird hiring market zone. But we're all getting our feet under us and we've been incredibly by seeing people. Uh, Nicole, what do you wanna do?
Um, I want somebody to just pull this thing out. Oh, so I'll be needing is not a laptop thing.
It's the speaker.
Good question.
From the. Are you talking? How about now? Well, that was it, but now we don't have a PowerPoint. Can I do that? First year. Either way, then.
There's.
You the.
Yeah, there's there's.
Oh, that's.
There you go. There you.
Let's try this.
That's it.
Oh. I like some big thing. Hey, for crowds.
I like to say that was my idea. Really was the one that carried it out.
That's true. I do. I. Well, welcome. Welcome to Toby. About our first. Great.
Hello, everyone. I'm Michael Osborne. I'm the Assistant Finance Director.
And I just did an introduction of myself and Toby LaFrance, the Finance Director.
So we're here to talk to you about a little bit of intro to finance, a little bit about what we do. And um, I know some of you have already been on the council and some of you are new. So I tried to make this broad. And as I said, a lot of this follows the budget book, which you can should have. Let's get started.
So uh, I'd like to take a moment, give a broad overview and also just let you know. Michael's gonna be doing a lot of, I'll call it the play by play. I'll be color commentary. And uh, so just like I might be jumping in a little bit where but uh, some of the things that Michael's talking about, I invite you, if you have questions, don't save it to the end. When it's relevant, feel free, let us know. This is this is informational for you. I wanted to make sure you know you're invited to uh to ask a question. That's why we're here is to provide you with information. Uh, so what I'd like to do is really broadly finance for for a city. At any given point in time, we are gonna have our finger on the pulse of the past, the present, future. So uh, and where the council gets involved in that is uh soon you will see cities act for the uh, and I need to the instead of comprehensive, so it's the annual comprehensive financial report. Uh, and it's switched around the letters on us for for good reason. And um, so that is the report of how the city did financially on the last fiscal year. And so fiscal years, July to June, it takes takes a long time to kind of compile all that information together. And so we're we're nearly complete with that document. Uh, and so that will be coming to to the council. And so that's.
Document is the audited.
It's the audited financial statements of the city. And so we have professional independent auditors, city contracts with to review our financials and make sure that we're doing our job to generally accept it accounting standards. Uh, so that's one of the things that they'll that they will do for us. So that's the past. We're also uh, we are measuring ourselves on what's going on in the present. So how are we doing? Uh, what are our actual expenses against the budget that was recently adopted? And so one of the things that you will see regularly is the finance department puts out a quarterly financial report. And we're will say how the last financial quarter, what were expenditures? How are we doing against what were revenues? How are we doing against budget? Are there any notable uh exceptions that you should know about? So that's something that you'll see. And then also, we're having to manage against that budget. So that budget represents a constraint to the up to to staff that work at the city. It is the maximum amount we can spend in support of the policies, the operations, the activities of the city. And so occasionally, we have a biennial budget. It's two years. When we're when we're preparing that budget, we might not be able to anticipate everything that's gonna happen in the next two years. So another place where we will be interacting would be a supplemental budget, where we might come to you and and talk to you about a potential change into the budget that you would need to consider and um and have that discussion and approve or not. So that's another place. That's where we will interact in the present. And then there's the future. And with the future, that is the budget process where the city goes about looking at policies, what are the priorities and putting its money where its mouth is. Uh, I had a a mentor many years ago when I was in that Central Budget Office in Park County. That would say, if it's not in the budget, it's not the policy of the world. So that's the time when we do the planning for the upcoming budget. And that's when we're looking at the future. So one of the things I just wanted to say in terms of the purpose of finance is we are looking at any point, we're taking care of what happened in the past, making sure it's getting reported properly. Take taking care of what's going on right now, making sure we are doing well against the budget, the constraints that this body has set for us. And we are looking to the future, helping the city plan towards the operations uh and policies and procedures of the of the city moving forward. So that's just a really broad overview. Michael's gonna talk about some of the details, a little bit about fund accounting. Um, what are the types of expenditures and revenues that we have? And just as we go along, feel free to ask any questions.
All right. Next up is a little bit of a flow chart, organization chart. We're a staff of seven people. Myself, Toby, and we have a city accountant, a contract specialist, AP technician, payroll specialist, and Tilly Giveller.
What's AP?
Uh, accounts payable. Uh, they're heading all the checks. Oh. So a broad overview. Um, right now, the city is currently in the midst of our uh financial twenty two audit. So these numbers are unaudited. But for fiscal year end, FY twenty two, the city's fund balance at the end was fifty seven point seven million dollars. The city also works on a biennium budget, which is a two year uh budget window. And for the fiscal year FY twenty three, twenty four, that budget was one hundred and fifty two point nine million. Uh, city's revenues for fiscal year twenty two were fifty six point four million. Uh, the city's banking, we have three uh parts to our banking uh operations. We have a checking account and as of six thirty, that uh balance was one point three million. That's our main account where we're writing payroll checks, uh accounts payable checks. All of our general business we're doing out of that account. We also have a uh pool account, an LGIP account, which we get better interest rate than checking account. And currently, the interest rate for that is three point oh four percent. And with the LGIP, there's a cap of, I believe it's fifty two million. So if we have excess money, um we take that and invest it in six month, short term uh safe liquid funds to get a little bit better interest rate. Also, I know uh the city's FTE count. As of the last budget, we were budgeted to have one hundred and forty six point seven five positions. Currently, we're staffed really close to that, one hundred and forty and a half positions.
Can I ask questions just to clarify?
Please.
So the fund balance is what was carried out at the end of the budget year. And I know we have reserve, like every fund account has an amount of reserves. But is our is our intention to carry over a whole year's worth of? I mean, that's a bigger number than our revenue for that. So is our intention to carry over that much money as much as our annual revenue each year?
So actually, you're stealing some of my thunder. Uh, uh, when, and actually, why don't you go ahead and and why don't we talk about the next slide? And then if I can address our part where you're going there.
This is just an overview of the fund accounting and how that works. Fund accounting is set up to track the amount of money dedicated to various specific city uh operations. I believe the city has eleven uh different funds that you can all see here. But the main one is the general fund, or that's where most of our uh expenses and salaries come out of. We also have proprietary funds for public works, uh that utility bills. Fees fund, uh the water fund, the wastewater fund, stormwater fund uh in addition to that.
So and before we before we leave that slide, uh and yeah, harkening back to the prior step where we had fifty seven million dollars in the fund balance. What's important to know is that fifty seven isn't just one pot. That is divided up amongst those, the twelve funds that were being shown on the slide. And with the reason we have the individual funds is so that frequently, the revenues we receive come with restrictions of how it can be used. And the general fund is the the place where, as a city, we have discretion. When we're talking about a water fund, a stormwater sewer fund, you have a utility bill. People are paying for those services. The revenues go into that fund and the only thing we're using that that money for is to provide sewer services and support and expand and improve the infrastructure that provides that service. So uh, so when we're talking about fifty seven million dollars, it's really parsed out into the various funds. Uh, in addition, when we have that money, frequently that money is obligated. It might be obligated due to uh federal requirements. Our funds that are getting carried forward uh might be because of state requirements. It could be, it could be something that the city itself has obligated. Uh, and so there are so frequently the the fund balances are earmarked in certain ways. And if you go into the budget document, you can you can see where we have dedicated fund balance. Then there might be a what's called an undedicated or amount to that fund balance. We also have uh reserve policies. And if you go into the budget document, there's actually a whole tab on financial policies. And so uh, and in there, there would be, there's reserve policies. So for example, general fund is about ten million dollars of that fifty seven. And about two million of it, it has been dedicated for various purposes, which leaves eight million dollars. Now, eight million dollars is in there is unrestricted. However, if you go to our fund balance policies, what you can see is that we need to carry about twenty five percent of the general fund operations in fund balance because of a matter of timing. Fiscal year starts in July. The biggest revenue within the general fund is property tax. And we don't get that until the end of November. We gotta pay the bills. We have to make payroll until we get to that that those large property tax checks. And in order to do that, we need about twenty five percent of the operations sitting in the bank in that fund balance, in that fifty seven million dollars, the ten million dollar portion that general fund is. So that uh at on July first, so that we can get to that uh revenue that we receive in late November or early this. So uh, the point being with the fifty seven million dollars you see there, some of it is already spoken for. Some of it is a matter of timing. And so uh, and that's something that we will have more time to talk about specifics of that. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that you know uh that it's not just kind of sitting there as as free money that we can be um using.
So I guess I'd be curious to know, and I don't expect me to. So I'll talk here, but how that maybe it's a discussion for the next budget. But how that number compares to what our policies require? Is it in line or is it bigger number by substantial?
And I actually haven't had time to do that analysis yet. And that is something that I I'm sure once we look at when we're going through the budget process uh that we it it should be a part of the discussion. How are we doing against our public, against our financial policies?
Yes, I'd be curious. Toward something.
And and I would say, again, my opinion on this is it's it is good and it is healthy to have undedicated reserves, even beyond what's in your financial policies. Because what that does is it helps you to, as an organization, to mitigate risk. And so should there be a financial downer? Are you able to um keep the talented staff around to help weather the storm till the till the economy improves? And be able to continue to provide services within the community? And so uh, and and anytime you can mitigate risk, it strengthens your financial position. And that's absolutely a choice of the city. So I'm giving you what my opinion as finance director. Uh, you know, as an elected body, you may have a a different opinion. My job is to tell you what the pros and cons of 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 any action would be. Yeah, absolutely.
So this slide was just to show a comparison of rapido's of the different revenues and expenditures of the different funds. You can see the general fund is is much larger than than the others. And this is just for fiscal year twenty twenty two.
So so wait, that was fourth quarter of twenty twenty six, so that was March through June.
Yes.
Through June.
Yes.
So like when transportation expenditures are more than revenues, that's because we had some projects that didn't happen over winter, they have better construction.
Timing. So I was gonna talk about the city's revenues and what percentage they make up of total city revenue. Um, first is fees and charges, which is your utility fees, your business licenses, building permits. This is the city's biggest uh revenue source at thirty six percent, which is a monthly stream. Next is property taxes, which comes in mainly in the end of November, December. This makes up fifteen percent. We get smaller intervals in, I think, January and April, but the majority of it is one time in uh December. There's also intergovernmental uh revenues. We'll go into this a little bit later, but these are state revenues distributed to the city. These are gas tax, liquor tax, uh vehicle registration and grants. Then there's fund transfers. So I believe Toby can talk a little bit about in a minute. But uh, these are transfers from fund within the city, from one fund to another. Uh, storm, if you're doing stormwater work, uh you would earmark or identify those funds and then transfer them back to the general or vice versa.
And you still can, even though that's money that's already within the city's budget, you still consider that revenue?
So, yeah, we we we, in fact, we have to. Uh, so so the the vast majority of the transfers, as I understand it, within City of Milwaukee is uh to help, so help support people like me. So what you wanna do is I am not just supporting the general fund of the city of Milwaukee. However, I my payroll, my paycheck comes out of the general fund. What I do also helps to support water, sewer, storm, transportation, the other funds. And so they make a proportionate transfer into the general fund for the cost of having myself finance city management, the the various support functions, administrative functions of the city. And uh, so that's the 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 most common transfer that's happening within the city of Milwaukee. And so it shows up as a transfer expense within, say, the stormwater fund, which then becomes a revenue to general fund, and then it helps to support the expenditure of my my paycheck uh and the services that I provide. So uh, so yeah, it is kind of it is sort of double counting the same dollar. Uh, and it can make a a budget seem larger than the amount of money we actually have. Uh, because that same dollar is getting counted twice in the budget. Uh, however, we we are, in order to be transparent as to where that stormwater dollar is going, we need to show it as that stormwater expense, we need to show it as that revenue in the general fund. Uh, and so it does get booked both ways.
Remaining other sources, uh we get franchise fees from uh PGE, Northwest Natural. Uh, we also get uh parking fines and forfeitures. That makes up eight percent of revenue. And one thing we noted in in this budget is the proceeds from debt is twenty one million that we had budgeted to go out for, which is included in this, which is roughly fourteen percent. Uh, we ended up going out for twenty three point five million, which you'll see in a minute, but we just wanted to show that that's one of the the revenue sources.
And in a typical year, you're not gonna see that proceeds being a significant proportion of the total revenues of of the city. So having fourteen percent out of D fleet relative percentages of the other uh revenue types.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm confused about how revenue, how proceeds from debt is a revenue.
When we.
This is an expenditure.
It will become an expenditure. So again, we have to show it, it have to show full size of the ledger. Um, we're gonna sell bonds. They were budgeted at twenty one million. We're actually gonna sell slightly more than that. And uh, when we receive that that money, it goes into our bank accounts and we have to receive that as a revenue.
Sure.
Uh, and so then again, it's a matter of transparency. And then we will be tracking how we are expending those funds.
Question on intergovernmental, specifically grants. In in a general sense, how do you? How do you forecast? You know, when do you have the confidence to forecast a grant into your budget?
Uh, actually, I can't speak to Milwaukee. I can talk about my prior experience. And so uh, and again, it would be a case of when you are there are some grants that, especially some smaller public safety grants that you get every year. Uh, and so you feel pretty comfortable budgeting it and forecasting it in into the future. Uh, otherwise, generally, you don't really forecast it until you until you're confident you're gonna get it. Uh, and so this it is, it's tricky, especially when, you know, if you have, say, a capital project that's dependent upon grants. And uh, so you still want to budget for it, so you've got a balanced budget. Uh, however, you need to make sure you actually get it before you start spending that money.
So does that take the form, does that get rolled into a supplement budget or?
Yeah, it could be. So again, if you have, thank you for 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 bringing that up. Uh, if you've received a grant that you thought potentially you might you might get, but you weren't confident enough to budget it. Uh, or just over the two year period of of a budget, uh, that might be one of those things that wasn't anticipated at the time of the budget. You come in, you come to council, you say, we have an equal amount of revenue to support this additional expenditure. We would like to amend the budget and increase the budget miserably.
And I guess I would say my, I mean, we do have occasionally had a grant that was turned around pretty fast, but a lot of a lot of state grants for Monroe Greenway and or, you know, TSP bonds, so take that quite a while. So we have time to predict.
All right, this slide is kind of showing a calendar of what revenues we get and when. The ones on the left hand side are pretty regular and keep the city's cash flow uh moving. Utility fees, which is big, local state and gas tax, vehicle registration fees, liquor tax. Those all come in on a monthly basis. We have state revenue sharing and franchise fee, which come in quarterly. Then on your right side, we have things that are more infrequent, but still important, property taxes, which come in in November. And uh, to a smaller extent, the business registration, which comes through at the end of the year and we collect usually around January.
We good. Uh, is there a marijuana tax?
Yes, that would be on a monthly scale. Talking about cities' expenses, our biggest expense is people and labor. Uh, that makes up thirty three percent is our salary and benefits. Uh, next up is capital outlay. These are projects, uh, construction, building that are over ten thousand in capacity. Go into our capital outlay, which makes up twenty seven percent of our expense. Uh, material and services, these are non-capital items that fall below that ten thousand dollar threshold. Uh, I guess occupational duels dues and small tools, that makes up twenty two percent. The the flip side of the city revenue, the transfers that we talked about earlier, that's twelve percent. Uh, and those are the transfer of costs uh from one fund to another. And then debt service payment makes up six percent of our expenses. And then debt service payment makes up six percent of our expenses.
So, and where this is gonna vary from year to year the most is gonna be your capital. Professional services, materials and services, it's pretty steady. Uh, and debt service, you know in advance, well in advance, how much that's. Your capital expenditures are are where you're gonna see uh the bumpiest expenditure curve. So they'll go up and down quite a bit from year to year.
The next slide we wanted to show the city's outstanding debt and apologize if. If you can't read it, if they're small, all this information is in the the budget. But we just wanted to show that the city right now currently is outstanding thirty, just roughly under thirty seven million. In outstanding debt on eight different projects.
And that's not including the debt we're just.
No, that's not including that. We're anticipating, we're going to uh. We're going to debt to ask for twenty three point five million. Which we're anticipating to pay back over a twenty-year period for transportation and urban renewal projects.
So a couple of things just to point out here is uh we have different revenue sources that are supporting. The the eight different debt issuances that the city currently has. Uh, so we, you know, we talked about all those different funds, so where we have. Debt, that's that's there for transportation projects, it's being paid for out of the transportation demand and so on. Uh, additionally, uh while this may look like a lot of debt, there is the state. Statute on limitation of how much general obligation debt a city can have is equal to three percent of the market value. Of of the community, and we are at this point more than a hundred million dollars of potential debt under that threshold. Uh, so, while it might appear that this is a lot of debt, it's actually very well below the capacity for the the city of Milwaukee.
Of the twenty three five that we anticipate, um how much of that is without? A reliable revenue stream to repay? Are there areas of debt that we're being obligated to? That we don't have anticipated revenue plans in?
That's that's supporting the the new debt.
So all of that debt is coming from transportation dollars or in part or revenue. Uh, so I believe that I would contend that they all have repayment plans in place for uh being obligated to.
And one of the things that Piper, our financial advisor is Piper Sandler, who's helping us with this. And one of the things they looked for was revenue ratio versus uh payback ratio. Which I think it was roughly two to one, three to one, but our coverage was very good when they brought that up. So the final thing I was just good, wanted to talk about is the budget committee. The budget committee's role is to review and approve the budget to council for adoption. The budget committee consists of the five members here of city council and five citizen members. We meet quarterly to go over the city's uh quarterly financials. Uh, the next meeting is February thirteenth at five thirty. Uh, kind of looking out for a schedule for next year for preparation for the next twenty FY twenty five, twenty six budget. We began planning that probably at the end of this year, early into January, we start looking at uh. Where we are and start preparing for divisions that to look at their budget and look at their spending. Next April, we go to review with the budget committee, so it usually lasts two or three sessions. And we'll go through and all the departments will come before the budget committee and answer questions and justify budget. Uh, adoption usually goes to council in June of twenty twenty four. And then the budget will go into effect July one of twenty twenty four for a two-year period. That is all that we have. If you open the floor to questions or comments.
I actually have a comment while you are thinking about it, um and I've said this to both of these individuals, but it's it's my opportunity to say it here. For me, the most important thing that we do all all day, every day is protect our bond rating. So our bond rating is our ability to take out debt, and it's our ability to do so at a rate that is as cheap as is physically possible. Um, so the worse our debt rating is, the less likely we can take future debt if we have a situation or a problem. Uh, the way this manifests sometimes is in our reserve balances, so I just wanted to call it out here. It's the discussion that John Stoll and I often have, is how much is too much to reserve? With Toby being on this team, we're gonna have a discussion about where he feels like that should be. Uh, for him to feel safe and comfortable with our ability to continue to keep, we're a double A two. Uh, bond rating. Um, that is for, so there's a what's called a triple A bond rating, you're gonna hear about that from different government agencies. I'm guessing Multnomah is probably a triple A bond rating. Uh, because of our size, we were are never, this is the highest, more than likely that this city can ever get. It's a double A two bond rating, we are at the top, we're doing the best we can. Uh, the reason for that is because we can't, um, we're in a state where our income, our new income is. Committed at three percent or lower, right? So we can't have additional growth. We also are just small, so we're always a little more risky, uh because we just don't have as much money flowing in. And so there's always a chance that there's gonna be a situation different than Multnomah County. Where they just got so much money that they can always pull from a different place in a way that we just can't. So I think those are the only things I wanted to say here, but I'm looking at Toby, because we talked about this earlier, just to see if I missed something.
Uh, I'll I'll just chime in, I think ultimately. It, you know, people talk about performance measurement. The ultimate way to measure the performance of uh of a governmental organization is its bond rating. Bond rating is not something we assign ourselves. This is something that standard employers, booties, uh agencies. Uh, uh their job, their reputation is based upon going out, looking at cities across the country. And giving them a rating. What is, what is their risk profile? And City Milwaukee has a very good rating for the size of city that it is. Uh, and that comes from years of careful financial management. And it just takes, takes, can take one mistake to lose that rating. And so, uh, so it it's, it's the culmination of the work of this body. Budget committee, city management, finance, the daily decisions that the staff on the street are making on how to use their P car. It it's all of it. And uh, so it it's, it's, it's the the single best measure. Uh, so it is, it's worth, it's worth building and it's worth protecting once you get it where it needs to be.
How do we, how does Milwaukee uh address uh appreciation of assets?
That would be in our in our accounting, it gets reported in our act for. Uh, and if you want detailed, do you wanna give like a summary of that?
Straight line or is it accelerated with zero or combination or?
I think it probably depends on, it can, it can vary by asset, however, uh I'm not sure entirely how Milwaukee handles it. Michael, is that something you you have, or is that something?
I can get that information, but just speaking high level, I think it depends on. The asset life, the projected asset life, like for something for public works, uh. Yeah, it'd be straight.
But the life of a pipe, we do it the life of a car.
That's that's why I said it's a combination.
Thank you.
So when we make a purchase over a certain, obviously, over a certain dollar amount, we assign it a life?
Essentially.
Yeah, okay.
Over ten thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is a lower threshold to be tracking.
Other questions? I have a question about the vacancies. So, um, roughly six F T E is pretty low. Uh, that's great. Uh, how many of those positions are full-time versus part-time? Um, is there, what does the plan look like to fill those?
And how did we?
We're not going to.
Uh, we can give you the exact report out of where we are, but it's flexing, I'd say weekly right now. So in some cases, for instance, we have a couple of police officers where we've decided to sign with TriMet. To go back to providing um services at TriMet's police department, uh those are not filled yet. So, and it's gonna take as well to train and get all those up. Um, and then we have carrying costs on top of that right now, just because it takes so long to get police officers through their training program. Um, so that happens, uh we have, yeah, this city manager is gonna be leaving, that'll be a vacancy. Right, it's just this constant, it's just a constant flexing. Um, we're, I'm actually really proud. Um, at the speed that we've been filling positions, um and the ability for us to fill positions and having a lot of conversations with city managers in crisis right now. Uh, yesterday I talked to Malala's, they don't have a finance director, neither of you could go. Uh, and they've had it out for months. They're really struggling to be able to find somebody to come in. It's just harder to get the right positions at the place. Um, engineers, we've, we always are struggling, uh just to keep up with just the sheer volume. Government can't compete against intel for engineers, it's just never going to be able to at the pay rate. So it's stuff like that where we're seeing that. What else are we?
Um, so in the library, we actually have a lot of part-time positions, so that's where you'll see those weird F T E amounts. And like today, we promoted two of our part-time library employees to. Cooler time uh positions at higher pay rates, I'm really excited about that. Um, and then we'll be having a conversation about, do we fill those part-time positions? Or is there a way to reallocate that F T E to provide more hours to existing staff? So those are conversations that we're having all the time. Um, working really hard to fill vacancies as quickly as we can. It was such a small F T E uh staff here in the city. One vacancy can kill it apart. It's really tough. Um, and so, one of, one of the things I've been working on, hi, I'm Randy, I'm the H R director, um. One of the things I've been working on is really streamlining our systems and our process. So that we can get um people in the seats qu- quickly.
When we do the quarterly reports, we actually go at that uh snapshot, we go through all the positions that are vacant. So you'll actually see, so the police department's been down, and we'll put a note on the side, it's numbered. And those correlate to the notes about, this has been harder to fill because of X Y B, or this one is just. This is a normal bill, right, for us, and we're carrying at this rate for this reason. Um, so Michael's been really great over uh the last, at the last meeting, and then Bonnie for years, just making sure it's really transparent about why we're having the vacancies. But this is, I would say this is the first time that I've seen a snapshot where we're down six. That is unusual. Usually we're, we're carrying at our, maybe within three or four of our max. Uh, so this seems a little deeper, uh I'm happy with it. It's better than I actually expected when I saw it.
Put it in perspective, this is as of June thirtieth of last year, so it's not accurate as of today.
Um, I'm wondering if those reports, um especially for the police department, include. What the overtime costs would be for um for staff while you're trying to get up to speed and fill those positions.
Um, it doesn't, well, it's gonna show up differently right now. So you are gonna see that in the quarterly report, and we are going to be high this year in our police department. But substantially higher than we projected into our budget because of overtime costs and the carrying costs of the new employees. So one of the things that I do all year round is I sort of watch as what's starting to hit. And then we start figuring out that project's not really going, we're gonna put a hold on that while we see what the real hit is over here. Um, but the police department is the major. F T uh discrepancy in budget this year because of those carrying costs. Um, one of the things, just uh Luke and I were talking about it this week, one of the ways to, so what's happening is you have to go through the state. Training programs, which you already know, not everyone does, uh you go through the state training programs usually right after you're hired, and then you have an eighteen-month probation. Looking to Randy to make sure, from the date you get back.
Uh, no, so the, we actually just renegotiated this with the union, the eighteen-month probation generally starts the date you get hired. Like, welcome, here's a badge, uh a training badge, right? Uh, and that usually triggers the eighteen-month probationary period, and in the past. Within three to five weeks, we're sending you off to a sixteen to eighteen academy. You'll learn a bunch of stuff, come back, get placed with a few different partners through your training program. And by the end of sixteen months, you're off training, and then you you end probation at eighteen. We recently renegotiated with the union that that eighteen months will start when they get to the academy. Because right now it's five or six months, uh because the state doesn't have uh the funding to run additional academies.
And we weren't seeing people long enough in the field before they were released for probation. So this extends the length of time, but it also, it's just a truism that we we don't, it's taking so long. Uh, one of the things that all the departments are doing right now is they're going to run a specialty training down at the state to try and get more officers through, I think in March. Uh, but it means that we're actually gonna go deeper into our rank because our people are trainers. So we'll have fewer people out on patrol because they're down training to try and get more people in, right? You can see how it's just this big cycle that's really difficult for everybody to get through, but if we don't do that. Then it can be nine, ten, eleven months to get people through the training program. So, um, every single police department is going through this, I think Portland more than anyone else, but Gresham is trying to figure this out. Everybody's going through this. So they're just trying to find the fastest way to get through the training. But everybody's carrying extra, carrying costs, extra load, uh debt on employees who can't actually function.
I just have one more personal related question. It has to do with first liability. So I noticed in the budget that there was, everybody's experienced this substantial increase in first liability. What does that track look like for Milwaukee in the next few years? And um, do we have a policy or procedure in place? So that uh a certain amount is allocated in first liability.
I would actually like us to put that into the quarterly, just to make sure that this team has time to look at the the answer to that, cause it's complicated. Couple of years ago, when Haley was our finance director, we did take out debt, um and we made the additional payments in order to do our coverage of that share. Um, we haven't had the discussion though, wow. So I just wanna buy them a little bit of time, uh but we will get you a response. Our meeting's in February, so you'll get a response from us before that, but everyone else will just plan on seeing it in the in the quarterly report. Yeah, absolutely, thanks for the questions. Any other around H R? Okay.
Any other budget questions?
Thank you very much.
And before we go to our next, while we get it set up, Randy actually needs to just talk to you for one minute. I wanted to give her a chance just to chat about what she.
Okay.
Um, I've been asked to uh give you all access to. The equity training that staff get when they're new here at the city of. And that generally includes three training, I'm only going to give you two. Because we're um having new harassment training prepared in March. Uh, but I don't wanna give you the old one, it's not uh fantastic, it's like barely meeting my objectives. So, uh we'll get you new harassment training, but it comes through a platform. Um, and I have to activate your accounts in the platform. You're going to get an email from do not reply at neogov dot com. Don't delete it. If you have your email up and running right now, I'm happy to do it for you. Um, and kind of walk you through that activation process. It's not hard, I promise. Um, but if you wait too long, your activation link will expire, and then you have to call me Monday through Friday to get a new link. And then I have to lock on and send you one. Uh, and then if you wait too long, again, we'll go through a vicious cycle. Uh, and it's just something I have had the opportunity to deal with. So I can send those to you right now, I'm not sure it'll work from a phone. But we, I I'll, I'll go ahead and send them, I'll hang out for a little bit in case you have trouble. And you're also welcome to give me a call, um, Monday through Friday.
If we, I mean, they'll be good until tomorrow, right?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, how long are the training?
Uh,
I mean, I realize it's all my trainings and none.
I don't, they're very long. Uh, one of them is on cultural competency. And I'm just going to see if I can pull it up real quick. One is cultural con- con- competency and the other is understanding and presenting, uh, preventing microaggressions. Not presenting microaggressions, that would be maybe not great. Uh, yeah, this screen's not going to give me the, the timeline, but I think they're like 15 and 30 minutes is what they are in their videos. They'll have a couple of little quiz questions will pop up or you might have to click on, you know, click on microaggressions and it will discuss it a little further. So if you get stuck on a screen in the training and it won't let you click next, it's because you have to click something uh, within that training module. Please don't use, um, Internet Explorer. It won't work. Uh, Chrome is your friend on, on this platform. Either Chrome or Edge will be fine, but please don't use Internet Explorer if that's still your default, um, browser. So I'm going to send these, if you can all just let me know, yes, I got the email. That would be great. So you should see those emails coming into your city email accounts. Again, it's coming from do not reply at neogov. And it will ask you for your username. That is your city email address and then you get to make up your own. If you ever get locked out, we can send you a password reset. Top enough? When did you get it? Did yours come through? Right, we got a, some kind of signal comes through, I like. Got it? Got it? Got it? Perfect. Okay. You all have my contact info somewhere. Um, so if you have any questions, feel free to, to reach out. Uh, leave a message, send an email, whatever. Uh, I, I do tend to be a little busy, but it's because I'm working really hard for you. Okay, I'm going to go home now.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Uh, okay, it's capital improvement plan time. Um, I'm going to do a quick overview and then I'm immediately going to hand it off to Jen and Peter. Jen has done a ton of workouts presentation and Peter has a ton of expertise in all this. So, but before they get started, we're just going to touch on a couple of things that I thought this might be helpful to you all as you enter into this portion of the presentations tonight. So, um, over the past five years, we have, first of all, it's important to know, which I think most of you do, that our capital improvement program is five years. So that budget and all that stuff that we just talked about is two years. That's where we actually put the money in, but the, the capital plan is a five-year document. And the reason why that's important is most capital projects take more than two years to construct. Oftentimes it's a three-year cycle. Design it anytime you have to buy, you know, right away, you have to actually get the folks on board and then the project itself might extend over multiple construction seasons, right? So, um, the capital improvement program is like, is very important. Uh, we hold it very near and dear to us because it is the roadmap to how we're actually going to be able to a project. And it's what gives us that certainty that even when we have something that's going to extend past an adopted budget, there's a plan for that. There's revenue that's identified for that to make sure that the project's actually completed. So just keep that in mind. That's why we, um, care a lot about that longer duration, um, and the CIPs for five years. Yeah, one of the main things we changed, um, in the past five years is we used to have both funded and unfunded projects in the capital improvement plan. Uh, we now only include funded projects. And that was something that we felt, I particularly felt pretty strongly about. It was pretty confusing to the public. They would go in, they'd go to the back of the document, they'd find 20 pages of stuff, right? Hey, look, we're going to get an overpass over 990, we're going to get this. And we had, it would just say unfunded and it just made it really challenging. So, um, that is something that we don't have anymore that I think has worked pretty well for us. Um, the other thing you guys already touched on quite a bit in the previous presentation, but, but when we first started, we were very much pay as you go for infrastructure. We are now very debt financed for infrastructure. Uh, and that has a lot of benefits. Um, it allows future users to help pay for the cost of the amenity versus, versus having everyone pay for it now. Um, and it, it just allows us to spread the cost out over, or over more years. So that's so far been helping us achieve a lot of our, our objectives with, um, SAFE in particular. Uh, and then, uh, the other part that you'll hear them talk quite a bit about is, uh, we used to be very, we'd have a water project. We'd have a road project. We'd have a sewer project. And what we found when we bonded in and we really wanted to be more aggressive with the total amount of work that we did. We needed to both integrate different types of utility work into a single project. And we actually needed to make our projects themselves a little bit bigger in order to make them more affordable. Actually, there's a, there's a kind of an economy of scale. We actually bring a bunch of things in together to, to get into a larger dollar amount. And so, um, that integrated project approach was a pretty major shift in how Milwaukee does business with respect to capital. And I would say that combined with just the scale of work that the city now does versus five years ago, or the two major changes that have happened. Um, there's kind of almost no comparison to the amount that's being built now than. Um, and then I guess last, but certainly not least is we have a lot of, we talk a lot about how small we are as a city. Cause we are and each person's, um, carrying a lot at any given moment. But we have a lot of depth in the capital improvement, uh, program and, and that capital project delivery process. So you're going to see, you've seen it before, you see Peter and Jen all the time, but as you get to know them, we have a lot of expertise. Jen has been a part, we've overlapped the entire time that we've been, um, and, uh, have kind of built this, 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 this together, uh, throughout. So intimately aware of all the different things that are in this document, why they're in that document, how we're paying for them. Um, and Peter came to the city with a ton of expertise in capital project development application, but has really become quite, uh, he's the go-to person at this point in terms of being able to project on our revenues and all these different funds. And certainly has a ton of expertise when it comes to, um, water and wastewater, uh, in, in those elements of the plan. So you are in really good hands with them. Um, and, and Steve is here too. He's, he's, uh, uh, Jen runs the capital, uh, part of the plan that Steve's been up to his ears and eyeballs and all things capital project development is over as well. Um, and is, has a ton of expertise on the private development side. So this team is, has a lot of expertise and, uh, that, that experience and commitment to these projects runs really deep with them. So I just wanted to say that on their behalf. They won't say that about themselves. So, um, I think with that, I'm actually going to stop talking. And then I also just want you to kind of know what I know so that at the end, if you have questions for me, I'm still here. I can come back up and kind of, you know, answer anything you want to know.
Well, I have one question on the thing you started on, which is the unfunded list. Is, does it live somewhere else?
It lives in plans.
It lives in plans?
Yeah. Yeah. So essentially all. Yeah. Well, it's not, it's not one big master list of, it's not like, I don't have like this giant hopes and dreams list. Um, but it's every plan that the city like develops and adopts has, usually has some amount of project lists in it. And those, all of those plans, we're going to talk about that in a little bit. Those are the sources of the projects that get into the CIP. They need to be in some type of adopted plan or we shouldn't be funding them because it means they're not vetted and made up. So they're there, but no, there's not some giant list that has every, every project from every plan that we've adopted. Uh, so yeah, it's really a five-year snapshot. And that, and it is why the, the actual budget process and the adoption of that document is, is, is so critical. And when folks talk about, well, how do you prioritize, where you get priorities from? That's always kind of the question mark about how you build these things. It takes so long, right? It's hard to, you know, it'd be really important to the folks to pick that project and that was eight years ago. So helping people see that it takes a long time, that this plan that you're adopting today, these things may not be built for 15 years, but they're in there. But you, you can only really build them when you decide to put them in your capital improvement plan and then put money to them. Otherwise they're just a project in a plan on show. Okay, that's it. I'm done talking.
All right, I'm Jennifer Garbley and that's the city engineer. And that is my main job is to run the capital improvement program, the city of Milwaukee. And I was hired actually because of the SAFE program was coming about. So they needed someone to help with those products.
And, uh, I'm Peter, past really on the public sector. I've been, I think Jen started about with that prior. This for, for a while.
All right. And it didn't work. Which button do I push? Not that one. That one? No. That one? That one? No. You mean, you want to move down, round? Oh, there it goes. Okay, which one was it? I did an arrow key. Okay, I think. Maybe you still did it. All right, so our CIP actually looks over, uh, six years, not five years. Um, we do forecast out a little bit further, so, um, um, and that's mainly because of how our master plans also are put together. So how do we create a CIP? There's kind of three main elements of that. First you got your planning documents, then you got your prioritization and cost estimating and any of your rates and funding. So let's first talk about these planning documents. These are definitely super critical. If it doesn't belong in a planning document, we really don't have a mechanism to put it into the CIP. So you have your bicycle pedestrian accessibility program. That's in 2016. We have an ADA transition plan since 2018. We have a climate action plan now, comprehensive plan. We have our Milwaukee municipal code. We just did our water master plan and wastewater master plan 2021. They were adopted in 2020.
They were adopted two past.
Oh, 22, okay. The important part of this is these plans are 20 years out typically. They forecast out 20 years, sometimes even 30. And they take a year to like 18 months just to put them together. It's a lot of work. Um, you're getting staffed together, getting a consultant together, and then you're forecasting and looking out, you know, 20, 30 years to put these plans together. And then they have to get either approved by the state and then adopted by the council.
Like just, just an add on, on to the length of, why some of them take so long too, like, like the wastewater master. It required us to spend probably about nine months just doing we put in flow monitor, monitoring devices in, in the state. See what it looked like, what flows looked like during dry weather times and what they looked like during wet weather times. We wanted to make sure we had a good, uh, variety of different storm events.
We have our TSP that is right now, um, under contract and starting to move forward. Is another one of those plans that's going to take 18 months before we have an adopted, maybe in two years, plan. Um, our stormwater master plan is the next one. It is in our current budget and we're going to be getting ready to put out and are cued upon a consultant in the next couple of months. So we'll see a word letter to a consultant here pretty soon. And then there's just others. There's other, uh, planning documents that we utilize. Um, sometimes there's parks in addition. It's just more or less to catch it all. And then you have our programs. So, um, not only do we have adopted plans, but we have programs. And so this is our S S M P. If you have any questions, please speak up. I don't need to wait till the end, so just speak up.
So S S M P stands for?
Street maintenance. Streets are the street service meetings program. And this plan is, it's not so few years old. It's, um, we've, we've seen it for quite a while. Um, it's, it's probably one of those ones we probably need to look at in the next year or two and kind of really see how we want to adapt it. But we'll talk about some things in there that I want to, um, look at first before we take that on. So just a little overview, um, it's meter streets at a 75% or above on pavement, pavement condition index. And so we rate all our streets. They go from typically zero to 100. You don't usually see a zero and you don't usually see a hundred. Hundreds like right when you pave it, the next day it like drops. Um, zero is pretty much your, you're on a gravel road. Um, the deferred maintenance, uh, no, doesn't have a really a concrete goal. Um, but, um, reconstruction of local streets should come after all preventative maintenance needs have been addressed. And so that means we're trying to do slurry seals or grinding overlays, um, for the road gets so bad that we actually need to do a full reconstruct and rebuild up that base. Um, prevent any street from deteriorating to the point of requiring reconstruction. I'm going to let you know right now, we're, we're in that stage. We, we don't, we haven't had enough money to really maintain this program to this level. Um, so we already do have streets that are beyond that, but we're coming up. There's other technology out there that we're looking at, um, GeoMax and things that give us, um, an opportunity to rebuild that base without rebuilding the full depth of it. Moving all that material out, just trucking trucks, which is going up. Um, so we're going to, we're going to try a few things in the next four years to see if they work and help us, um, expand our dollars a little bit more. And then it's to complete this 10-year, um, project street list, um, that was developed within this program. Um, best part about that is we have identified all those projects and in the next, um, four years, we should be finishing up that list in the current CIP program that we have. So how does this kind of come about to get to our SAFE program? Well, we had a TSP and then we did a bicycle pedestrian accessibility program in 2016. Then we did our ADA transition plan in 2018 and then came SAFE. So SAFE has, um, the overall arching goals accomplished, um, priority one, priority two quarter improvements within a 20-year planning horizon. However, the previous council came back and said, no, we want to do it fast that. So that's why we went out for bond. We went out for that bond so we could actually move those, do those projects faster. And this is where we came up with a nine-year integrated program goals for state. And so we are tracking these results. Um, and I will give you an update of where we're at, um, kind of right now. Um, after this, we have, so just in general, 27.9 miles of sidewalk. One mile of paths and trails, four miles of bike lanes. Gave 19.5 miles of roadway. Construct and repair 899 ADA ramps. That's a lot of ramps by the way, a lot of ramps. 78% of the 25-year SAFE program completed. An 82% implementation of the city's ADA transition plan. And complete the city's original 10-year. And complete the city's original ten-year SSMP project list. Um, so really great, really solid, um, goals for us to start with. So the next part of this is, we then had to kind of look at, all right, how are we gonna do all this? How are we going to set up this program, and how is it gonna function and achieve these goals? So one of the main things that came out right away was, we say we're gonna pave nineteen point five miles of roadway. But we're gonna put in twenty-seven point nine miles of sidewalk. And the number one thing that came across is, wait a minute, you're putting in sidewalks, but you're not paving my road. And it also was effect on the engineering side is because here we are, trying to put in these sidewalks, sometimes they have curbs, sometimes they don't. During, you're doing those ramps and you're affecting that surface. And so now we had all these kind of weird surfaces and trying to tie in and actually make an ADA client can very difficult. And so really at this point, any street I'm touching, I'm actually doing at least a grind in in lane. So then I can tie everything in smoothly and walk away saying, hey, we've buttoned up this street. So really, I would say that, that paving goal is probably gonna go, is, is, I'm gonna be pushing it up to make it higher. Because we're gonna put sidewalk in and ramps, we're gonna wanna pave to, at least a grind in over. And it gives us a little bit of space to make great changes and make a smooth transition and help with drainage. So we can meet also our stormwater goals. So here's just a little snapshot of where we are, um, right now with our SSMP. Um, so the SSMP program was really looking at, okay, we want to maintain arterials and collectors. Pretty much not look at neighborhood and local roads. However, those local roads are sixty percent of our network. Um, so that's a huge, huge amount. But really, we've been focusing on those arterials, and we're almost at seventy.
So the first number PCI, oh, that's the condition. So the sixth, the percentage sign, I think the collector shouldn't be.
Yeah, I think I have a toe there, sorry.
So.
Yeah, it's fifty-six PCI with the collectors are coming in at at the moment. So, um, with this information, that's where in this last CIP, me and Peter looked at it and said, hey, we, we need to put some more funds towards, um, SSMP. Um, so two things that we're looking at, let's increase our budget for slurry seal. Um, and crack seal. So this allows us, we go out, do if there's cracking, seal that, and then we can put a slurry seal. It's a thin coat over the top of that surface. It doesn't work for arterials and collectors, but it's fantastic for low-volume streets, so residentials. So we increased that budget, um, and it's forecasted actually for the next six years as putting in like half a million dollars into slurry seal. Then we looked at the, um, residential streets. And another issue we came about is we're putting in, here's our project limits for our SAFE project. And we're getting this, the pieces we want, then we'll have this little holy sack that's right here. It's not in our projects. Well, we should be picking those up. We're not gonna come back and pick up that holy sack anytime soon. And so we put in another half a million dollar for residential surface repair for the next six years. Obviously, the next two are what is approved, but the plan for that, so we can pick up that small area. And so we're really kind of completing the project a little bit more than what we could have done, you know, previously.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I think it's really, really important in that way you sort of get a, a more complete project. Where you don't have sort of jagged ends at the project. You've got that sort of, in, in, in some cases, the full width of the pavement renewed. It's, it, that, that allows us to complete.
So. Um, really, it's money, right? Like, I didn't have a ton of SSMP dollars for, um, forty-third and forty-second. Um, we had sewer project that was, um, a stormwater, actually, um, being replaced in that area. And so originally, we were just going to do the trench. So I wasn't doing a full width of the street. I wasn't, you know, I was just, I just had money to do the trench. So the holy sack wasn't on the list either, because we're just doing trench, and I'm on the other street. I came in under budget during construction, um, or within budget, within my budget authorization. And I said, all right, I've got some money here. Can I do an actual grind in, in lay, and now pick up that piece? And pick up a little bit on convell that wasn't originally, it was, I mean, after construction, it was kind of almost to rubble, like, let's, let's pick up a little bit more. Let's go a little bit further. I have, I have some flexibility within my contingency, and so I did pick it up. But it's that mindset of, you know, of it sometimes ahead of time and being able to put it on your project a little bit sooner. Um, and ask for it in design, right? That was, that was a piece I added, and they were fine with adding it. Not all contractors are okay with adding it. So being able to plan for it a little more and knowing you have a funding source for it makes it a little bit easier to, um, pay for it. And so that's really the reasoning for it. Yeah. All right, so now we get into prioritization and cost estimating. So we take our SAFE program goals, we take our SSMP. Um, our near-term projects that are in that water, wastewater and stormwater master plans. Those go out really far, but we need to know what's gonna be pulled in. But then we have to look at it even bigger. We have to say, okay, here we are, we're creating these big bundled projects. Because we're doing, um, SAFE and SSMP, so we want to make sure we're grabbing those. And we want to come to each location once, each neighborhood once. Construction is tough. It is difficult. It is painful. So I want to make sure I'm coming and I'm doing everything there that I'm gonna affect. At least within the, within the next five years, right? All that's getting done in one year. And it means I get a cost efficiency. It's less contracts we're putting out, so that's a benefit. Unless you have more contracts, it's more work. Doesn't matter how many, but dollar amount, it's a lot of paperwork. Got one project, I can make that more efficient. Um, it means the community, it's impacting less. So they are like, okay, I'll, well, hang on, we'll, we'll, we'll get there. You're right, it's gonna be a year of hell. Okay, I can make that work. And then we also have a policy put in there, and that is, after a street has been paved, we don't want to come back for five years. If a developer comes in, they gotta pay money, extra money to cut into that road. And same with us, we don't want to come back in there. Longer I can keep that road solid, the longer it lasts. So we don't want trenches in there if we can make that happen. Not always, but that's our policy, is trying to make sure we're getting everything we can in. And not impact that community as much. So we create a big spreadsheet, and we put in all of these funds. And we forecast, but then we also have to update what are you gonna have for inflation. And so that's the next piece. And I'm, I gotta go out six years, because our, that CIP is six years. So I gotta make sure whatever project, let's say it was two years ago, well, now I gotta bring it up and put it in the new CIP. Escalate it and make sure the scope's looking good. Do we need to take something out? Do we need to put something in? Do we need to pull it out? And so that's where we work and look at the fund balances. And what projects get put in that CIP kind of depend on, there's fund balances. And what can we do, get done in the next two years?
Do you have a, a general percentage for contingency that you add on or?
So we start a project at the beginning of the, um, planning phase at like a forty percent contingency. As we get in design, it comes down. When I get to construction, I'm looking at a five to ten percent that I will, um, do a budget authorization for. Depending on the risks that I see in the product. So I, I set that dollar amount when I come to you for a budget authorization. Um, but at the beginning, there's just so many unknowns, and it has been designed, we're looking at a forty percent, um, contingency. On our cost estimating. We'll see if that's gonna be enough for this next year. Um, we've definitely seen an increase in construction costs.
So the master plans have twenty years of projects, right? So say you're doing a project on Home Avenue, any project, and you've got some things in the master plan, but they're pretty far out there. Like, where's your cutoff of what you're gonna kind of pull forward and do faster because you're doing this project? Versus something that's so far out there in the master plan that you don't think it's really ripe or fair? Or whatever to pull it.
So, um, typically, I like to also, um, update master plans every ten years. Because they definitely, after ten years, become kind of outdated. Um, and you have different priorities, different switch. So anything beyond ten years, I would say I'm not pulling too much further.
Well, and, and, and I, and I think, you know, when we, when we do a master plan, it's looking at, it's looking at several things. Several hundred, it's looking at our current existing systems. That, that we have those, we have current needs for. And then it's also looking at these future, future. So a lot of the, a lot of those out here projects are related to, to. So in a lot of cases, those ones that are further out there, uh, you may not, they, they may ever come to fruition dependent on how growth, you know, how the growth plays out. Uh, so, but, you know, there is, there, there, there can be times where we do make adjustments and sure, bring things in.
Or the situation changed, like you got a pipeline that all of a sudden, looks like it's good, but it actually fails. And we now need to put that sooner because it's becoming a problem of too many placement repairs, and so. That would be. But yeah, so, I mean, so the, within five years, you're definitely on moving projects forward if I'm doing a SAFE project. Um, that there's a water sewer project, um, because I don't want to impact that pavement that I'm gonna be putting back. Um, anything beyond ten years, maybe not as much, that those are definitely kind of pushed out there a little.
And when we do that, we have to look at the impacts to rates as well. So if there's a, you know, project, there's a big expense associated. That water, wastewater, storm infrastructure. You know, the rate structure's not picking that up. And you, you have to figure out, are you gonna do, are you gonna increase the rates or are you gonna need to go out and finance?
I mean, a good example's gonna be water, um, in a few years, if we ever feel we need to. I mean, the master plan right now calls for a new reservoir. Um, that's expensive. So we'll have to plan for that.
Uh, so, yeah, so how do we pay for everything, right? So where does, where does the funding come for, for our CIP? So, you know, uh, there's, there's a, a variety of sources of funds, but, you know, first and foremost, in our proprietary funds are water, wastewater and stormwater utilities. It's from those rates. And we go through a rate-making process, uh, as we, as we're developing the budget. And what we do is we look at what are our revenue, sort of the. So first and foremost, you know, with get, what's it gonna cost us to operate and maintain the systems? All of the personnel expenses, all of the, the maintenance supply items that we need, that's, that's part of the formula. The other parts are, do we have any debt services placed? We want to be sure that we, we've got the funds to pay for the debt service that we may have taken out. So we have those payments, right? Uh, we, we take a look at what do we have in our capital improvement. Are we going to pay as we go, you know, and, and adjust the rates to, to capture those capital improvement needs? Or are we going to do some? Uh, the other part that we look at too in terms of that revenue part is our cash balance, it's our policy cash. So like, for example, on, on our water cash balance, we set a policy, I think it's fifty percent of our operations and maintenance cost. We're supposed to.
Fifty?
Fifty percent of that O and M cost. Uh, on the wastewater, it's twenty-five percent of the zone. There's a big difference on O and M cost for, for water and wastewater, because on the wastewater side, there's a really big expense bill, the treatment cost there, for all the treatment from the community, that's factored in. So that's why it's only twenty-five percent. Uh, and then on, on stormwater, it's, um, it's really twenty-five percent. Uh, I think when, you know, Toby and, and Michael were talking, cash balance. There, there's a couple of things I'd like, I, I'd sort of like to add to that. Why are the cash balances? What are we trying to capture by having that money on hand? So, you know, first of all, I, I think Toby talked a little bit about this. Want to make sure you have that working capital. There's, there's always a lag between bills and revenues and expenses, so you want to make sure that you in the fund to pay for the bills. Uh, you want to make sure that you have sufficient funding, cash drop events. We have insurance, but insurance doesn't pay for everything, and it takes time. So if you have the cash on hand, you can hire somebody to come and fix things and then get reimbursed from insurance. So that, that's part of it. Uh, you want to make sure that you've got that service covered. And then also CIP, there's, there's a, there's a factor in there. Uh, in two thousand and nineteen, when we went through, when we did a robust, uh, cost of service study for wastewater utilities, a consultant at the time had some recommendations for this cash balance. And they actually suggested that it wouldn't be out of, that, like, the water, which is maybe a little bit, like, seventy percent of the water. And wastewater from about twenty-five and thirty-five percent. And really, it sort of captures that sort of cash drop. So you want to make sure, because infrastructure, water and wastewater infrastructure is expensive. There's a lot of dollars that can be. Uh, so that's sort of how the cash balance, and what, what we're trying to capture with these cash balances. So when we, when we set our rates, we, you know, I, I, I have to talk a little bit about what, what figures into those revenue requirements. And then from there, you know, we, we take a look at, uh, what we expect is gonna happen next seven, eight years, right? So we, we factor in all those expenses, then we also make some assumptions in terms of future. That could act, that impacts the rates. If we have more growth, even more residential growth or more industrial growth, you can see larger swings in consumption, in consumption demand from, from the customers. So you can, you know, we've, in, in our last iteration of the budget, we factored in, uh, for the, for this next two years, that we were gonna see the residential. Our, the Henley place, so it's getting filled with customers, we're gonna see water usage more. That, that gets factored into that. Yeah, so we, we take a look at that, those growth and income investment and growth. Uh, assumptions, but also consumption assumptions. So how are people's customers' consumption? You know, over the last, you know, fifteen to twenty years, what we see in, um, in, in water industries, you've seen the decline in water consumption at, at the residential level. As people put in more official water fixtures, so you have to capture, there's a change. Consumption, use your, that's always working. So you, you try to factor those sorts of things as well. Uh, and then you might have a larger, might, you know, in terms of commercial and industrial, maybe you have more rich industrial customer that's gonna be in, that has, that's gonna use a lot of water. You take a look at those sort of things, factor, factor those things in, and always sort of on more of a conservative side. So, so you're not, not wildly. Adjusting the rates, or wildly adjusting those, those factors to, to keep. Uh, and then, uh, I did want to talk a little bit about the cost of services. So what that, that study did was took a look at what does it cost to serve the different customers? So residential, commercial, industrial customers. They all have different needs, they all have different requirements on how we serve. So we wanted to make sure that those. So we wanted to make sure that those different customer classes are subsidizing the other customer classes. Like the large industrial customer infrastructure that we built to serve those customers, they're paying share for. Or vice versa, right? And we do find over time that different customer classes. Subsidize the other customer classes because you have change, you have change. Graphics of those customer classifications, you get more customers, you get less customers that change their consumption behavior. So every. You know, probably every five years, it's a good practice to go back and do that cost of service study. So, you know, probably in the next budget cycle, I have a cost of service study done again for the one. To, to, to take a look at that. Uh. So some of the other funding that we have, we talked a little bit about grants, I think Michael and Toby talked about grants and those are all sources of revenues. It is, it, it can be challenged to, to forecast if you're going to get a grant, but you know, we. We, if we're going to go out for it and we have an expense associated with, you know, I think what we've done in the past, we. If it doesn't happen, then we've got to adjust.
Everything in the current C I P has been, right, that we've talked about, it's been awarded. So it's not. Usually in the budget, I will, I won't put it in the whole C I P at six, six years. So that's where I'm trying to find additional funding. After we get through the next budget cycles to help that C I P feature.
And then we also have another, another source of our system development charges. So recently updated our wastewater system charge. It was, it was last spring. Uh, we are, we have started the process on updating. System development charge, working with a consultant there to do that. And then we're also doing an analysis. Perhaps in system development chart. Uh, the storm water system development chart would be part of the, the. Stormwater master plan effort that we're going to do. So that'll be part of that financial organization. We'll update that methodology to capture. That new S T C.
Nothing gets me excited like an S T C.
And, uh, and then, of course, there's the urban renewal, which basically is for the tax increment financing tool that we have. To use new property tax increment or certain projects that have been. Urban renewal plan, which are part of, which is part of the C I P. Kelly worked really hard on. And I think that was also part of. Request that we, that we had. And then the bond alone, you know, going out and finding something. You know, I think utilities, most utilities. It, it's, it's almost a necessity. The treatment. You don't necessarily have the cash. You don't have to just sit in on the pain to make. At a bill to treat it. So generally you have to go out in. So in that case, it's just the current rate, paying for that improvement, it's the future, future rate pairs and users. So those are, those are really sort of the forces of, uh, of, of being that, that, that we use to finance our C I P. I, I, I will mention your, our, our average customer, residential customer, currently. That uses six, uh, units of, of water. Which is about forty-five hundred gallons a month, roughly, forty-four and forty-five hundred gallons a month. That average bill, which includes water. Wastewater, stormwater, safe, and S S N P. It's about a hundred and thirty-seven dollars a month. No, last, last year, we, we made some minor adjustments to the, to the water and wastewater utilities. Two and a half percent each. Uh, we kept the storm water utility flat and then raised the safety and S S N P. See how construction costs, it's five year construction cost.
You have any other questions on how we create a C I P?
I, I have one. I mean, so you talked about earlier, you have to adjust for inflation in the future. It couldn't have been easy this past year with inflation and then with like the ability of supply chain. That, that's really, that's hard. I mean, that, that's really hard. I've been in China and tried to learn Mandarin, that's hard, but like trying to adjust for all of it, that can be easy.
Yeah, this budget was put together before, you know, a lot of this hit. So that'll, it's going to impact. Next budget in the projects that are out right now. We'll see, we'll see what comes out. I've worked really hard. On with contractors and giving them good time to be able to complete projects that has helped us to stay. Um, but we'll see how much that's going to work, right? Um, we've got, you'll hear about a couple of projects that are coming out that we'll know about where. Where we're sitting here pretty soon, um, to get some ideas.
Yeah, and I, uh, we certainly have on the water side. Dramatically affected. Our, our two project, which we'll talk about. You know, there was a pump that was going to go into the, into the well, into the ground. It, it took like nine years. That sort of really caused a lot of problems.
And I think just to go back to what you're saying, counselor, there is zero way for us to predict this. And we're not. Um, it's why the reserves are important. And it's why sometimes we have to remove projects because we, it's more important for us to build one project well than it is to get to. Uh, King is a great example where we had a project that didn't have quite the right design aspects of what we wanted. We pulled it. We waited till we could get more cash in order to build it, right? And I think the, the team's done an excellent job of balancing. The, that, the needs and the money we have and flexing as things have come and gone. Uh, the same thing happens when we're in our general fund budgets and Toby's going to talk, I'm sure, a lot about this over the next year. Um, we guestimate, we predict, but there are days, it's what I was saying about the police funding. Right? It's all basally plants. And so a lot of this is all of us just trying to manage these dips and flows to make sure that we're delivering. Uh, but it does mean that sometimes our risk doesn't align with either yours or the, or the budget committees. So we're more risk adverse and we're trying to make sure we can do all the things and keep everybody hired and keep everything. Forward, whereas sometimes people would rather see more funding returned back to the resident, right? So it's the same discussion we're having with John. It's why we'll be back at the next meeting to talk about that in more depth. But I just wanted to call out. I think they've done a phenomenal job. They also don't have a, a magic like forecast. Um, and so they're just really good at managing this. And that's why we also have a C I P review process. And actually, I sat through it today. Kelly's been leading that for the last couple of years, uh, many years, forever. She's been leading it since she created it and has now been doing it. Uh, but they're constantly checking in. Monthly meetings about where we are as we have to put cash.
Another mechanism I've utilized is when we go out to bid, we put some items on an alternate, uh, bid schedule. And so it's like, okay, this is my wish list. I want all of this, but maybe I can only get this. And so because they're an alternate. I can easily pull them out of the project and then award it and move forward, or I can do them. And so it's just.
So the bidder lists the bids of them individually.
Yeah, not everything, but we'll, we'll take, there will be items that we'll look at, hey, if we, if we could, or do we need to pull this out? It makes it easier for me to worry. So let's say it's over, um, you know, half a million. Well, half a million is still a lot. So how do I? How do I close that gap? How do I make that more reasonable? And so those bid alternates are easy to pull out because. They're identified as a bid item and just pull it out, move on.
I did have two other, quick other things related to, to rates and, and funding. So, you know, not only do we get revenue from rates. But there are also other fees. So, you know, if somebody's doing. Putting, tapping into service or replacing service, up, upsizing. Doing a shut off or turning, there's, there can be phases. And there are fees on pretty much all of our utilities. And those are part of that master fee schedule as well. You know, we counsel looks at those and proves those. But in addition, master fees, they make. We're, we're discussions where, you know. They make the recommendations.
All right. So this is kind of a little snapshot where we're at in our, um, safe program. Uh, so. We've got our target values there, sidewalks. You know, we're trying to get to twenty-seven point nine million. Right now, we're at about twenty-two percent. And that's a little bit lower because we've kind of shifted what we've been doing on paths. And so we've put in way more paths than we ever anticipated. Um, but I think it's been a great mechanism. So we'll have to look at that probably in the next cycle if we want to change that goal slightly or we leave it as is and just show, no, we just have a lot of paths. We changed that sidewalk, um, configuration. Miles were right on target for thirty-five percent. So we've completed the first kind of phase. And now we're entering into that second phase, starting, um, this kind of year. Bike lines were at thirty-five percent and the successful ramps were at thirty-five percent as well. Um, and we just got a grant that will be pushing out here pretty soon. Um, what Clackens County, do you have another forty, forty ramps?
Uh.
Okay, ramps on spot?
They were at about thirty ramps.
Thirty ramps.
Forty, but the cost's gone up. So grant a hundred forty-five thousand.
And those ramps are going where?
They're spot, um, just, um, areas that we're not necessarily putting in additional sidewalks, that the ramp is in compliance. Um, so.
Uh, they're, Brian, I said focus on areas where transit is and where commercial is, so people are going to build areas.
So this last year, we did do a, um, community survey and I think it's just important to note that seventy-seven percent are satisfied. On how the city is providing safe places for people to walk and bike. So program is working and the program. They're, they're noticing the benefits and it all looks construction, but as soon as it's done. We've got a lot of people pretty happy about the infrastructure that's going to be. So let's talk about what's coming up. What's going to happen this next year? All right. So Meek North Face is a stormwater project that's been going on since two thousand and seventeen. So it's, it's a major one. Um.
And for people who don't know, the project that was built there kind of. Near the public safety building where there's the big swell and that's me, so, so. So that one's done.
So we were able to build half of it, um, right away. And that was mainly driven because of the Monroe Apartments was coming in. And they needed, um, a spot to, um, have access to connect to our stormwater system. And so it's like, well, we, we, we can't delay this any longer. Um, it is really tough working with the railroad. I'm, I'm just going to put that out there. It, it is the hardest agency to work with. And that's any of them. Um, but so that's why this is taking a long time. However. We have seen, we have received approval from the railroad for the pipeline easement and to purchase the property for the second. Um, pot that needs to go in for this infrastructure. Right now, I'm trying to get the agreement updated, um, from the railroad. In addition, we're now just getting ready to. Um, I've seen the, uh, application for the, um, land use for planning to get our new plot. Um, because we're basically, um, buying a portion of railroad's property. The road has got to sign that document so it can start. So we're putting the pressure on it. Um, the plan right now is a closing date for June, uh, twenty twenty-three, uh, to purchase that property. Which means I'll be coming to you for a, um, budget authorization to purchase that property between now and then. And then plans are ready. The plans literally have been designed and ready to go since two thousand and seventeen. So once that happens, then with bid package, we'll be ready to go out and we will construct our face. Fingers crossed. We just need to make some signatures and move on. Okay. Let's talk about Monroe, Monroe Street Greenway. You've got to really think about this, not as a project, but as a program. Because this is really like five projects in one. And yes, I've got two segments that are called out as segment D. This is a picture and not, I cannot date the number. So that will get fixed, that will get fixed. The next time we talk about Monroe, Street Greenway. So segments D and E. This area, oh, my cursor doesn't work. Um, D and E, they're blue. That is funded by Metro. That is our grant that we're getting. They are getting ready to send that out for an R F Q. So we've been working with them. Their O dot is running it. Um, and we're, we're a partner. Um, so they're propping that R F Q and we should see that going out pretty soon.
That's R F Q for design?
Yes. Yep.
So, I mean, I imagine everyone knows we have a touch.
Yeah, they're going to now finally take that and make that up to a hundred percent and then we'll go for construction.
How long, how long, I mentioned, I'm with the four billion, uh, regional flexible funding grant that we can see. We also contributed what about nine hundred thousand dollars we wanted under the front of Kelly. Funded that out of city funds that I think I guess in order. Order, but the, but for, they wanted money in front, that they thought was short of our share. So yes.
So it's, it's moving, it's going, it's gonna keep moving. Your second project, what I would call would be the other segment D constructed by private development. This is the section at Monroe Apartments. I know that that should be happening pretty soon. They've been waiting on P G E, their power poles. Um, they're supposed to be out actually next week. Um, so that should be moving forward. As soon as those poles are moved out of the way. Then that piece will be able to be constructed. Sidewalks in, the multi-use path piece, uh, the cycle track piece. Is next. Then we, uh, come to, let's put, do the circle. The circle is the intersection at two twenty-four. Um, O dot currently is under, um, design for that intersection. Uh, Steve has been attending those, um, meetings. Um, we just identified a water line that we want to repair, um, underneath that intersection. It's about sixty years old. Um, we're looking at it. If we're doing these improvements, we should up, we should make sure that pipeline is good to go. So we're going to get a contract out pretty soon, uh, to bring on a designer to do that water line through there. And then O dot is giving us, uh, one point five million to do these tie-ins on either side of that intersection. And so that money is actually state money. So that they are gonna, we're gonna look at an I P A here within the next few months. Um, and they're going to turn those funds over to us and we're actually going to run that piece. So our goal is to really kind of do that in the same kind of timeline as O dot is doing those improvements. Um, and keep moving that piece forward.
To ask for clarity too, that both good and bad in time, but the E twenty-four intersection, uh, we're supposed to reserve. See the first set of plans as well, look at. Uh, then it's going, kind of. Be put on hold for six months. What O dot has decided to do is they have a project that's massive. project that massive is to do a granite overlay of highway two twenty four between Rust Road and seventeen thousand. The entire stretch breaks through walkie hall, four lanes of it, so we ground and overlay with that which which asshole. They wanna combine this small intersection project with that very large granite overlay project, get your copy of scale and just point it there once in the way yet. The intersection project is an end of timeline ahead of the granite overlay. So they're gonna put the intersection project on hold for about six months. We've been meeting regularly since February of twenty two. And once these plans come out, we'll look at them, give them comments, and then we probably won't get again until the summer.
But they're expecting to start the big granite overlay project this summer?
No, 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 no. Uh this will all be built twenty four, twenty four, twenty five that 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 timeframe. And we can't start our design of the transition into the intersection, to the intersection that is completed, that we won't know what elevations and what's the map. So the one point five lane again, I said this is the next month or three, we took an IPA uh working on the IPA. And then once the science is complete, that allows us to go on to hire our own design consultant.
Um I would say the one piece for your knowledge is we do have a little bit of a gap on Oak um between twenty ninth and Monroe. So um that we're we're looking for additional funding to finish that piece and also sit down with the railroad. So so yeah. And we're gonna that piece. Uh any other questions on Monroe? All right, Washington area improvements. Okay, so we are um currently under design with AKS. They are approaching ninety percent design. We're expecting to get those plans actually this month. Um so we're on target to be able to go out to bid um this uh March, April timeframe is what I would say. Got a little leeway in there. Um this project has a little bit of everything in it. There's water, there's wastewater, there's stormwater, there's a culvert. Um I am planning on bidding it out with the two summer um bid schedule because the culvert is in water work. Um and so it just in case if they can't get all the supplies they need to be able to do it this summer, you need to be able to do it the following summer. Um so we're really looking at a a a good amount of time for them to construct. Um that'll also help us with pricing. The longer we give them, more likely we can get better pricing, have time for lead time. We're not worried about doing express orders and things like that. Um which is great. This project is definitely gonna give us a sense of where we're sitting um funding. Um the consultant's pretty nervous. It's we're over our level budget. So we're already setting it up to have some alternates um in order to be able to pull items out.
Um quick question about this. So how, what type of communication do you have with the school district around bus routes? There's couple of buses that just come down to get to Rao. Wondering, you know, as the timeline for the project evolves, is there a point person with the school district to talk about transportation with detours?
Yes, they're, yes, they're definitely involved and they're they get updates on every submit also thirty sixteen ninety. Um as far as that goes. And then soon as we decide when we're rolling out for construction, then that will impact a whole nother set of uh requirements for notification. Um we also still gotta bring on. Once you bring on the contractor, then it's like, okay, what's the schedule? What does this look like? How are they going to build it? And then we have another discussion about how that's gonna impact.
And does the school district partner with the communication that comes out? Or is that, does that line with just the city?
Um I'm not sure on that piece. Um we do have JLA on our team that we use um in addition to our staff. Um to help provide communication out on a regular basis. So um they'll be a stakeholder as far as that goes to get constant uh notifications. Usually we do, once we're in full blown construction, we're weekly or biweekly.
My experience with the school is that they handle their own internal communication. They'll their bus staff, their parents. They'll handle that. All we do is give them like the truth.
I think we we well, obviously we have a TriMet bus also on this line too. So we've got not only school, but TriMet as well. Um but they're excited because we're also updating all of their stations. The bus stops and stuff. So where's the culvert? Culvert is.
Just east of twenty.
Twenty seven.
Spring Creek. There's the old uh water water wheel chair that's on the south side of the street. Culvert of that street right there on it's on the the north side. That culvert we suspect is in poor condition because it's being constantly repaired. We think it has holes in it and it keeps pulling soil in from under the street. We're gonna dig it out, put a new grid uh right there at that piece of one, just east of one.
I didn't know there was a pond on the north side.
There is. Well, the way with Black River is it's down there.
Yeah, okay, interesting, okay.
All right, Arnold North improvements. Um this is an in-house design. Um Tessie's actually working on it. Um and she's approaching um a ninety percent as well. So we will, this will be a second project that'll be going out for construction um here pretty soon. Uh we're really looking at a a shared roadway concept. Um and so I just want to run that to your attention because it's not gonna have a typical street section where you have um sidewalks on both sides and then the roadway. Um shared concept is everyone is using it. Um and the idea of this is it's on a really low volume streets. I mean, they have like three hundred cars a day. Um and so we wanna um really look at that and utilize that because it's already functioning at that, but need better improvements um to help it. And so that's, you know, you're not gonna, you're not gonna see the separated sidewalk on this design. Um it is a shared road concept.
I know those kids in the picture.
Do you?
Well, it's a leader.
That's true.
The hat by the, it's Angel's daughter.
Nice.
Is that the same as?
Yes, yes, yes. Correct.
Well, thanks. Uh I've got three projects that have have posed some challenges over time in particular, and 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 they're they're fairly complex projects, actually. Uh our, the first one is our SCADA project. So this is a project uh that we went through and we developed a master plan. SCADA is an acronym super treasury control and and data acquisition. And what it really is, it's the tool that we're able to use for operating our water system and wastewater collection system remote. So we're able to open up the laptop and see what's happening at the tree. Turn on wells, turn off wells, make sure that chlorine is being put into the water. We can do that remote. We can troubleshoot this thing's remote. The system that we have in place was originally, it was like a nineteen nineties vintage. City did not do a lot of. So uh we went through a a process where we did a master plan in two thousand two thousand eighteen. And develop what are our needs in future? What do we want the system to? What are the cybersecurity needs? All those, all those pieces. And then from there, we uh went out and did an RFQ and hired Tetra Tech to come and do this. So and when we did that, it was just before COVID. COVID hit. And so that caused some some issues in particular in terms of getting people on the site to go do, you know, start to do something. Be done. Anyway, we got to a point last year where we went out for bid on the first package, which was communications package. So with this system, we built in sort of redundant communications into the system. Right now, just operates based off of a broadband radio. But what we've gone in and added, the the ability to use wireless cellular network. And and then a broadband, so we're using the CT. First wireless system provides us some additional redundancy. As a fallback is this broadband radio uh piece. So uh the thought was we would, we would go out for bid in two different phases. Uh first phase being telecommunications. And then the second phase controls piece. And we went out for bid in 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 May. We didn't get any. Yeah. And then about a week later, the designer, the lead broker, project manager that was working for Tetra retired. Like, like no notice. So that caused costs certainly caused us some consternation and concern. And 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 discussions with Tetra Tech, we decided to sort of repackage and go out and do this instead of one phase, we found out and talking with the consultant, contractors out there. The way that that initial phase was put a lot of risk on on telecommunications contractor um. And they were comfortable bidding on it that in that in that way is sort of a a performance specification where it was, it put a lot of, a lot more of some of the specific design. So we back and uh and are now repackaging that. This month, we have the validation walkthrough through the plants to make sure that we're not missing anything uh on this process. And then I'm expecting for bid. About one. Project. Um and with and and also during that time, we had people out for extended periods of time. Just it's been, it's been a, it's been a challenge and it's it and it's fairly complex. Uh and then Brandon left and he too, he's got like the network architecture component of all the servers and all those pieces. Uh there's been, there's been a handful of things, but Joe, Joe Gardner stepped in as being. Our well number two, I mentioned that briefly a little bit ago. Uh this project is a replacement for our old well number two. Uh so before I got here, the city had diagnosed they had a problem with crack casing in the old well. Prognosis wasn't. So the decision is that. So we drilled a new well about twenty twenty yards away from the old well. With the new wellhouse and pump. I I mentioned we had some extended um supply chain issue pump um as well as some of some of some minor, you know, electronic controls and things like that were necessary to communicate with our skates. It's just our debt. Anyway, we're, we are in the in the phase of closing out that project. There's some punchless items. Finalizing, the well's been in operation since since early September, been functioning well. Uh so we're closing out that project, getting getting punchless. Expect those to be done. And then the next big project we have is our Stanley reservoir, two point seven million dollars. We're using ARCA dollars on that. Um the challenge with this project is is the three gallon tank off a stand. Uh and so when that down, we've got to make sure that we have sufficient water and storage. So you know, ideal, the ideal time to paint uh and recoat storage tanks is when it's dry in the summer. Right? And we can't do it in the summer because that's our peak. So what we're doing is we're gonna be doing this project fall of twenty third, this fall and into the winter. Uh they have new coating systems that they can, that are uh that you can use higher humidity tunnels. Uh but what we're gonna be doing on this is we're going to be you know, being the exterior, which has the paint on it. So what what would that all require us is to sort of shroud the entire reservoir. So they're gonna remove all that. They're going to also strip off all the paint on the interior, which doesn't happen. Make some seismic improvements on some of the internal structure and also on the external piece. And then we're also looking at as an additive alternate protection to the system to reduce corrosion. So two point seven million dollar project. Uh we've gone through and we sort of modeled what the best, what the best time of the year is bottom model. It's like that sort of fall into the winter uh where we're only having, you know, demands of about two million gallons. With this, with this take down, that gives us roughly about two and a half million gallons of capacity of what we need to have in place. Uh and as a contingency, we've been working with Portland. Portland water pier to set up a process if we need to, if we need to. We'll be able to bring it. Certainly, certainly unanticipated. You never know. We do have. But we're getting all this.
Last time we used that inner time, we had a.
Yeah, we know. Yeah, exactly. I I got here nine months after that, I think. Ideally, that's not gonna happen. Hope that's not gonna.
But it is critical we get this project done. I mean, that's a a great reservoir. It's in good shape still. It just needs a little bit of maintenance. So we 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 need to.
Well, and I I it really had, I don't think, I think the coatings. Right from code.
Yes.
I think it's been a challenge for for the staff to like and and there's a scary moment like taking it, taking that offline. And we have taken it offline to do periodic maintenance inspection, like just for a few days. So those are the 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 big projects that we've got.
All right. So our other little upcoming projects would be our wastewater improvements is gonna go out this month. That's exciting. I mean, um this is a little bit of lining. It's an open trench. Um it's a bunch of spot repairs in the city that we've lumped together as one project. Um and I just haven't had a staff person, it's an in-house design, be able to do it. So that's why it's we're gonna get it done this year. King Road Improvements is our next, I would say, project that's gonna go out for design um sold. And uh we're anticipating that this this winter. Um uh so that's exciting. And then Harvey's kind of the one after that, that look we should see as well. Harvey was originally gonna be an in-house design and then we did lose our civil engineer. Um that and so now um I wanted to keep it on track and keep moving it forward. And so we're gonna pull consultant on, keep that going. And then we have Waverly Heights Sewer Improvement. This is a project that's been in the CIP and water or wastewater master plant for like twenty years. Um it's in a back million dollar house and we don't own the easements. We don't own the roads. Uh it's gonna be. So yeah, it has, um really what I'm, I mean, real concern is if a lot of our INI, there's a lot of clay pipe in this area. It's the lack of the clay pipe in our city. So um it this project is subject to um getting additional funds from us. It is hopefully reducing how much INI we have going to the wastewater treatment plant. Um.
So I and I, well, who are into that term?
Um.
And now the direct information in the. So.
So water coming into the pipe. That's basically like groundwater, right? Um we wanna keep those solids. We don't, we don't wanna add any additional water to dilute our wastewater and then have to treat it.
That's why we have plant overflow load last month.
Yeah, yes.
Cause there's a lot of water that infiltrates into the pipes. And so it's a high wet season. More is coming into the plant than the plant. more is coming into the plant than the plant area.
Right, yeah. So, and you usually see that in the wintertime, right? Because your groundwater is coming up because of all of the rain that's happening. So it's hitting our pipes, um, and least resistance down the pipeline.
Just curious to when, when you mentioned about the, the easements, is that why we also decide, or what are the reasons?
Um, for consultant, um, some of it's the size, um, King Road is, you know, projected at like a six million dollar project. Um, that's a lot for one of my staff to take on. I mean, so that they're kind of tied up and can't do anything else. Side the project, complexity of the project, um, Waverly, I decided she also is just um, there's risk, right? There's risk back. It's not, you're not in here right away. So I wanna bring on a consultant to and it's also got a lot of, um, rock. I think the geotech aspect of it's gonna be interesting. Um, if we can line it, that's probably gonna be our best cost option, but we might not be able to line everything. So we're, we're gonna see what we can do in there as far as that option.
Um, question about the RFQs. Do you run a whole process for each individual project? Or do you have a set of pre-qualified contractors that you work with that you could run an abbreviated RFQ or
So I have both set in place right now. The only problem is I have a allowance, a grant that I can do with my pre-qualification program. I can only do two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it's a max. So all of these projects are above two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fee. So they're actually going out for full competitive bid and opening it up to everybody.
What's the administrative process to adjust that threshold? And would it, I mean, how mu, like, I'm, I'm wondering if it's a policy change that could then impact and free up more staff capacity? So that you wouldn't have to run or is there a risk?
Okay, uh, there's a couple of things you're asking about. One is the SCAP improvement lines. We're actually having a conversation. We are looking at some things to update that. Included in that, we can have a list of what the thresholds are for both the bid processes, um the signature processes, the approvals by council, all those things we can give you that just goes over what that process would be. Um, actually, we had this conversation three or four years ago, uh, with the council. And we actually increased the last signing thr- uh, thresholds. Just so the council didn't, uh, we were able to be a little more flexible. Contracts out the door. Um, but Jen works tirelessly, more than, actually, we both do, but Peter and Jen are the number one producers of contracts here at the city. Uh, so any who are willing to take this on and if they have real things to say besides excitement and joy in the process.
Oh, and then just to finish up, some of the, you know, concerns as far as on the engineering side. Um, we are going out for the bond, so that is like moving forward, which is great. Um, we kind of slowed some projects down. So like King Road and Harvey, I would have had out probably in the fall. But that got slowed down because we didn't have a bond in place, a second bond. Um, so now that's kind of getting back on track and like wanting to push those out. Construction costs are increasing. Um, we, from the local agencies, we've been talking and getting some word back. And they've said, yeah, I mean, some of them are seeing thirty to forty percent increases. Um, we'll see how that impacts Milwaukee. Um, I've heard that in the past and it hasn't hit as sometimes as hard, but it all just kind of depends on timing and what the project is. Um, contractors do like to work for us. Um, so we've grown some great partnerships and, um ability to work with them and get things done and move forward. Uh, and staff resources, I still don't have a civil engineer, uh, so that person left in March. Um, so we're going back out. Um, hopefully we can find someone, but everybody is looking for someone. So we're trying to figure out who we can steal from. Uh, other than that, you have any other questions for us?
Actually, just a comment on that last, um, I sent around to the council economic reports that come out from the state enforcement department. And I noticed that for Clackamas County, the sector of highest hiring was local government. Actually, I thought that was really interesting. Like, of all those economic sectors hiring, uh, you know, busy hiring local governments.
Kelly, that's a quick ask. Sorry, I have one thing. Um, apology. Oh, and then also, I'm sorry. Um, so, okay, so one thing that was in the safe plan, uh, was kind of spot improvements. So you'll notice a lot of these are big old projects. They've been in place for a long time. They're kind of worked in lots. You just see a problem that's on your street. That was supposed to come through the spot, from a million dollars over twenty years. Um, we weren't able to do that a few years, just constantly getting stuff in effort, uh, just to start any projects out the door. The intention was to do the first round of safe spot, uh, for two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred thousand.
Two fifty.
Two hundred and fifty thousand and, um, I was going to run a little process with public safety advisory committee to kind of identify, you know, goals, um, what problems are out there, what fix, what, work with team engineering these to gather some data on where our safety issues are, and then kind of come up with a little lots of countermeasures, right? And they wouldn't be the most expensive, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars doesn't buy us talking signs, paint. Um, you could probably spend almost all that money on two red flashing beacons, right? So it would be sort of talking about, okay, do we uh, how do we wanna run this? How do we wanna balance geographic equity and the different challenges we face? So a little, kind of a little planning process for it. Um, with my departure, that really, that can't happen right now. There's no capacity, uh, to run that. Uh, and there probably will be for here at least another six months or so. Uh, so I would say that went back on the T V D list a little bit. I'm telling you about it because it is one of the places where the public can engage. I mean, it's, it feels a little bit more accessible to say, hey, we've got this pot of money. You know, it's for small projects, but, you know, go back out to your neighborhood associations, go talk to your neighbors, whatever. Kind of run a little bit of engagement around it. But I think the, I think the we should, we started budget process last year. So, um, it does need to come back at some point. I'm just telling you, I'm the reason why it's not happening right now. Um, and you know, Steve and Ben, uh, the public safety advisory, and you're looking to that. And I also think with you all coming in, I think it's something that with fresh eyes, you should probably, that was, that was how I thought it should work. I'm not sure it should work like that necessarily. You all may have ideas or suggestions about how you wanna engage on that differently. But
But you're ready to move that forward. It's not really tied to, you know, speed.
No, I was actually, and that's again where you all could hit pause on it. And it would not be a bad idea to pause it for longer, to be honest. Uh, because you can come back later and then you still have those dollars to then do early implementation of some T S P priorities that are identified. So I think that's an open question. I was kind of responding to some of the urgency that was coming up during the budget process to try to get that moving even before we had a T S P. Uh, whether or not you should do that anymore, I think it's just something maybe the team to consider. But it is something that, uh, we were gonna try to do in twenty twenty-three that's now
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, is that amount of money already allocated and is it an annual allocation?
It is. We actually, it's not annual. Uh, it's two fifty by annual. We just, we did include it in the bond that we just brought in. Um, so it is available to spend in spite of Uh, that's not an automatic thing, kind of that process that, uh, Jenna, Peter outlined is you look at your priorities, you figure out much money you've got coming in and you line it to your priorities. It would have to be an intentional, you know, do it again. You have to look at the next budget. Um, so if you don't do it this time, which again, there's lots of reasons to consider not, uh, right now. You'd ultimately just need to hit that program target of ten dollars by the time, right? So we're lending the entire safe program. You shouldn't hit that ten dollar target in that time, at some point, with, with with this element.
Just be aware there are some local residents
Yes.
Yeah, so it's just knowing how you all are gonna be there is a desire and there is something that, that they could change. Uh, a little bit more so than kind of be prioritizing multi-million dollar projects that take years to design. A little more accessible.
Uh, just a, just an observation that a- anyone who chime in here. Uh, rather than, you know, a lot of information here thinks, uh, you know, rather than looking at this, uh, whole uh, capital project program as a glass half empty, let me sort of look at it as half full because uh, there's a lot of good work that's going on here. And, uh, you know, Safe has got a great bumper sticker. It's, you know, it's out there. It's got you know, buying from the citizens are satisfied with it. If, you know, I kind of thought I was fairly well informed, but no, I was not very well informed about all the accomplishments in the S S M P world, you know? And when you look at that slide that you had up, Jennifer, that had the eight or ten blocks about all the things that done, I guess my observation is that hasn't been very well publicized, has it? I mean, is that a accurate observation?
I would say, oh, I'm not, I'm not good at that. I think, yeah, I would say there probably is more. I've done, uh, Steve has done a really good job at keeping sure we stop at each end of the project and celebrate. Um, the, the, the focus has usually been at that point that it's been high impact. We've usually put through a bit of pain to get to that place. And we're out there trying to help them to say thank you, and that's the focus. Um, I'd say just in the past year, I know Trent's been on speaking. Good job at APW Way. And I think having, which he's presented to the Clackamas Cities Dinner, I think that was a good chance to start kind of share it off a little bit more. Um, and we certainly have gotten some awards, but just kind of wholesale sharing, you know, no, I should have done more of it. It's just
I'm just
kind of hard when you're Yeah, we could tell more.
Celebrate, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I support celebrating more. It'll be good things to do. It's just hard when you're in the middle of
I know, you wanna go off on something else, right?
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna say, I mean, I do think we, you know, usually have some kind of celebration of projects, like one of that gets assistance. Um, but like, one of the things I heard last time we did, we haven't done slurry seal a couple of years, right? But last time we did it, I heard from two or three people. That was awesome, you know? Why doesn't the city do more of that? You know, so even those smaller budget kind of items like that, I mean, I do think we could be sharing around town. Hey, we did, you know, four miles of residential streets, whatever.
Stop putting like a pilot article. Is that on the website? Do you have any ideas?
Highlights, website, social media.
Yes.
You just write it once and you can plug it in all these places.
Go ahead. And, um, you know, coming from one of the N D A positions, you know, in the community, there's really good communication that goes out to N D As that are in affected areas. Like I'm thinking of the forty-second, forty-third, you know, like uh, a lot of information has gone out, but maybe it's just an additional ask because we know that a lot of the N D A participants don't always reflect our entire community. So if there's an additional ask to N D A leaders to say, please put this out on your own social media, share this more widely into the community beyond just that neighborhood failing list. Uh, you know, then it puts, it's incumbent upon volunteers that are in the community that are already activated, um, to help with
Do you have one thing you can help us that we did make that we've underutilized that would be an easy button? We actually made a really sweet video about for twenty-second where actually the family talked about walking to visit their grandparents, sidewalk, it's adorable. And we never really did much with it. And, uh, we made it, it's great. And then it dawned. So I did actually send that to all the people. It's just actually a nice way. It describes the safe program. It talks about what it is. Uh, and it's, it's really sweet.
Well, I thought it was a great presentation. And even as somebody who, you know, has been around a while, I learned a lot. Uh, I did wanna ask one thing or just bring one thing up for future consideration, which is in the last council, we talked a few times about trying to find new terminology to use instead of master plan. And, um, so I do think we wanna think about that as a city. I don't know what other cities are doing. I mean, I think for some things, systems plan works. I've seen parks, districts use systems, park systems plan. Um, for, it may not work for everything. Doesn't seem like it works for quite everything. But if we could be thinking about what terminology we should be using.
Anything else?
I'm gonna just say two things before I let everybody out of the room. The first is, so at the very beginning, there's this really list of all the plans that wouldn't think that uh, this building wasn't necessarily that plane. City Hall sort of happens that it, so it's also, it's not an entirely comprehensive list. I really appreciated that Kelly and the team have done over the last couple of years. They have been still doing the charters for all those other projects, even if they don't quite comply with that base level of, they came through this planning process. So when you see the C I P, you do see things that aren't necessarily coming out of planning documents. Um, if you wanna go through it, I strongly recommend just reading the last one in college, either Jen or Peter, if you have questions about specific projects, talk to them. Uh, the other piece that I wanted to just mention tonight is, um, because my finance director is brand new and I just got so excited that somebody was gonna step up and be like, yes, let's help you be more efficient. I'm also gonna say that it is at least six months before we have any discussions just because of the base that is coming into that right now. Some software that we need to look at is tracking work that we're trying to do. It's just gonna be a little while, but it's on our list. Don't be there. That's it.
Okay. Nothing else, then I guess we're adjourned.